This conference will now be recorded.
Tied white ribbons around trees in honor of all the first responders and the medical team working with COVID. That campaign is starting officially tomorrow. Mr. Bliss, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thanks, man.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, equal and liberty and justice for all.
Oh, name, both of them, please.
Lehman, here.
Oldham.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Blackett.
And Richardson.
I'll take it, sir. He's not on.
He is not on.
No.
Uh, Carl, here. Foster.
Here.
And Liz, here.
Now, we're gonna open a politics meeting to, uh, if anybody from the, from the community would like to discuss the budget and for the strategic plan for 2021, please come forward. Looking forward to any contribution that could be available. If not, we'll continue with the meeting. We have a, I have a motion to approve the amendments of the Council made in service today.
Senator.
I was in the room, the governor. On the comments that I was, I make motion to approve amendment. At the very end, it says something to the effect that I said that we were talking about mandatory special class that I said we'd have to comply. So I tried to say was that, you know, I wouldn't think we could harm people or slight people and that's like. So the way it reads, I asked our lead to clean it up a little bit, but I.
So you want to.
So could we free the minutes of that amendment?
Yes.
I didn't have any.
So you're gonna, I'm gonna read.
Uh, that, uh, that comment was a little bit short and what I really wanted to say was if we were to make a mandatory mask or, which we didn't do it, but I wanna get this straightened out. We would have had to have citations or fines and things like that. And we couldn't, we don't have the staff and courses that we really need a voluntary.
So that's how you want that amendment?
That's just, if it's supported, that's fine. I would second that.
All favor. Uh, my first.
Thank you.
What?
I, I couldn't make a comment as well. Um, the last meeting, I was online and I could not hear anything. So I tried to attend virtually and I could not hear at all. I was at the company where it's here and I'm like, I'm all there again and I tried my best to be here, but I could not hear the sound at all. So I'm just, I'm curious how many other people when they call in to try to do the virtual meeting and they have those issues, we just really try to hear.
We have, I did get a couple of comments that our audio wasn't very good.
I think he has a bit, so I'm sorry, I just tried and I watched. Didn't hear anything at all.
What were, what were you trying to, to listen to?
I'm sorry.
What were you listening on?
Well, I tried on the iPad and there's my phone.
Which connection was it?
Um, well, the city iPad and one of mine. And then I tried with my personal phone and I tried with my city phone as well. I never heard it here again.
So you're, you're, you're here, right?
So why, my personal was no hope because the other two were still on. But I remember saying things, so I'm sorry, I didn't try.
You couldn't hear anybody?
Nothing.
Okay.
Nothing at all.
Reports we've had before is that they can hear some, but not all. And it seems like they can always hear, uh, the mayor and I pretty well, but not anybody else. And part of that is to speak into X the end of the microphone. Um, uh, that, yeah.
My funny note, I really didn't try.
Yeah.
Talking about, I had no idea what was going on. I'm sorry.
I know we have trouble when people come up because of mic storms and the audio was not the best there. We're trying to prove that.
Yeah, I've got a couple, uh, hearing presenters, all of them, I'm listening to them, obviously, somebody Charlie Brown. Uh, it's like your mic is right across the floor.
Okay. Oh, that's, wow. But I, I figured.
We were, we tried. Actually, me too, because we didn't hear what.
But you need that, like, you need cameras. Uh, anyway, I just feel that I'm sorry, I really, I just tried.
I'm thinking about, we missed you. How's, how's your grandpa doing?
Oh, good, thank you. Is, I just got here different now.
Andrew Dawson, finance. Wait, wait a second. At Lucas Richardson, it looks like he's on now. Can you hear us, Lucas?
Yes.
So he has one. Sorry. Okay, hi. Lucas, how you doing, sir?
I'm good, I'm good. Sorry it took me so long.
Andrew Dawson.
First time when we give this for finance administration is a presentation by, uh, the, uh, Sodalia County Economic Development, uh, Jessica Yip.
My next question is, would you be as well?
Jessica, welcome.
Thank you.
Now, if you've heard, now, we have a difficult time.
Thanks.
There's some. Speech, if you can't, very quickly, that mic, so. Okay, more.
Send them over on.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. I think, I think you were gonna give me one. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for being able to be here tonight. Um, and, um, interesting, I'm Jessica Craig, we've been here the director of development of Sodalia County. Um, great organization, great role in this spot for, um, local community. I want to start with what is become development because a lot of what we do is not visible. Uh, we need to try to create wealth within this community in terms of jobs, capital investment. We do this by supporting these expansion, weekends retention, new business creation, network for creative companies to our community. So Sodalia County works on over 70 manufacturers and industrial related companies. We focus on the industry, but in your presentation, manufacturing, warehouse, distribution, headquarters, technology. The theory is those industries create new wealth in a community. They don't just circulate $100 like your retail or ingredients do. They bring money into the community. It all manages, invest $1 into those industries and it changes hands several times for a little bit of community. What's the point of existing businesses while it's probably the most exciting when you recruit a new company to your community? Uh, we probably spend most of our time on supporting existing businesses that are here throughout Sodalia County. The theory is, you guys know this, um, you can't rent a new customer if you're not in there. It's just, it's just, it helps work together for the community. So we support existing businesses for those that have a dozen employees, up to 18, or even 15. We do this by supporting them and having relationships with corporate headquarters offices. Because often, uh, are all divisions major locally. We collaborate a great deal with headquarters, we have the chance as well. We connect them to, to, we have two days to take care of community college. Uh, we are the connector to the government and county government so that they have a, a community in an area where it's where they thrive. Uh, we support them with supply chain issue and this year has been quite disruptive in terms of supply chain opportunities that live in there. And then we support companies by connecting them to other companies here in town that could be able to work with them. So great examples are students like Decker, Chaukin, believing which are living companies that have been appearing recently. We know that existing businesses create between 75 and 80% of all that new jobs. We've been a little, we're a mix of the capital and the people. And please feel free to ask any questions to me, get on the roll. Uh, with no distraction, we are that organization that's there marketing Sodalia County to companies with profit flow. Um, we are the ideal place for companies to invest if they need to build a new facility altogether. We maintain a lot of great relationships with property owners, both those that have acreage and buildings, because we are marketing that real estate for these companies in their community. Oftentimes, when a company has the need to grow, they will hire a site management consultant that will help them with that entire process. To find out where is the best location for them to grow and where do you want to go. Oftentimes, when we leave a request to a proposal to the company or a consultant, we may be one of 20 locations throughout Missouri, one of 20 states that that company is potentially looking at. So it's not necessarily about leaving the candidate choose from the very beginning. It's about giving the community a kind of survivalist, right? It's about not giving them a reason to eliminate you and having a great thing to do in the community such as infrastructure, workforce, quality life, learn, master, do a business. And just generally having an open, um, atmosphere for companies to live up here. We're a great field, Missouri Department of Economy Development and the Missouri Partnership, so that we do feel good indeed. And then, and then to respond to those. A great example, since I've been here, we've been successful on Green Capstone, which is in here, New Forest Seal, Exam One, and TMS International. So I think we've got a great track record there.
Just a few more.
Yeah, our project information request board.
Thank you.
Yes, so that's where a company can use the skills in terms of protect the new job, power of wage, capital investment. Anytime involved in sort of kind of quarterback, it's working with all of those players that can help support the development here at the local level, regional level, at the state level. This power point has been happening too. So having a virus for startups is really important from an entrepreneurial perspective. We are in a whole area that we already have, we actually do pre-springs to having entrepreneurs here. So we definitely want to make sure that we know about environmental support of entrepreneurs. We look forward about State Street Community College when they launched, small business center, probably five years ago now. Uh, we created one million test program, but I raise the mind the first week of every month, which everyone invited to. Uh, we highlight two entrepreneurs that can showcase their company or start a business. The only idea is that we connect them to each other and this entire framework here probably can be. We just met a top ten of years. You can see there is the availability of all of the construction projects for business retention, business expansion, and business attraction standpoint that we have led. Um, in 2017, we had one company that either grew their facilities here or recruited new companies here, totally 1300 new jobs here throughout Sodalia County. Uh, maybe more important than the new job, I think our retain job, because again, our base of employers is strong. We want to make sure that that continues true. 980 retain jobs, 392 million dollar capital investment has been expanded here throughout our community. Matthew Peril, 177 million. And I think what's importantly, almost by, it was the average starting salary of a company, $7,000 a year for a new job. Um, that's game changing for a region like ours, definitely business supporting region.
What's the, what's the county average?
The county average is about 40-ish, thousands, 1,000, yes. And if you add all that together, um, the capital investment times that seven factor, that's 2.74 billion already get on the gift pack. That's those industrial companies are heading here to, 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 to. And we have three pending project announcements. This is going to be a meet here where companies haven't wanted to announce what they have plans to grow because they might be downside from the other market. So we have not only not been able to have a, a grand opening for the more steel, whatever, companies that have them here, but we also have a little number of projects coming up. So I've been really encouraged. So speaking of 2020, it is been a neat year here, the problem for that, everything was a presentation, um, when it comes around. This will be the part of my presentation where I would highlight pressure leasings, uh, success in term 2020. Um, we didn't have a lot of pressure leasings this year in particular because of what I just mentioned. Companies are really holding tight on major decisions, uh, with so much economic uncertainty out there. They're really not stalling a new portal project. What I can say is I feel very pleased with how we have helped companies manage through the pandemic. I think in the February, as you guys are know, back in the February, what was coronavirus then? You're all kind of operating as normal. Um, Joey Barton, the president, he helped with your approach meetings, but hey, I think we should get our plate managers together and talk about the coronavirus thing. Okay, within 24 hours, we have 50 people, um, around in a large conference room. Um, state managers, HR managers, safety managers. Just educate them on what the pandemic, on what coronavirus was. We have now had 41 consecutive weeks where we go with them every single week, every Tuesday. These are the first information about, not just for all of the CDC, but the Department of Public Services, the Sodalia County Health Managers. So they had cutting edge information to take back and protect their employees from this. And I think really that first information has been the reason why every single person has been able to remain open and survive during that timeframe. Um, we early on established a triage system so the companies can avoid major outbreaks in the workplace. We heard some horror stories of other companies throughout the state beyond that, um, had a large outbreak. And so I feel really proud that our companies had, like I said, the first information they possibly could have. And then, um, not only, they, they were even managed through the pandemic. And we all know it's been a crazy eight, nine months so far. Uh, we work with our local and state leaders to ensure that these businesses are considered essential because according to those who have been catastrophic for the near local impact. Uh, we have been acknowledged statewide as a community that have worked with our residents, um, probably, um, was cutting edge. As a result of our assets and our, our car business recovery microdevelop, I want to defend our key recovery task force. Um, we'll be able to provide real time information back to our state leadership so they knew how to, um, best prepare companies to recover from this. As a matter of fact, we posted 21 consecutive weeks of talking with the state managers, the HR managers, and safety managers from companies, again, from a dozen employees to 1,800. Uh, all of that added up, there was 5,000, 581 participants. Obviously, this is a big day, but, um, it's been so long. We've always had a strong working relationship with our existing businesses. If there is a further length to this entire year, it is going to solidify that working relationship that we have with companies. Um, it's not, it's not a day and a bye where I don't get a phone call from one of our employers, say, hey, I just ran into the situation. Where I go, who I talk to, we have to manage through it. And so we brought everything we're doing to try to respond and help with that. Uh, we've, we've, uh, this is 24 companies so far within the group. And again, like I said, I just feel very proud of the companies, not, not my organization of the, of the companies throughout Sodalia County, Sodalia. Their roles actually in elevating to, to go to this job together. And I think it's even a day we're all stronger. So in terms of economic uncertainty and downturn, marketing is probably never more important. And as a community leader, we've got a lot of great businesses to market, if we tend to ever have a industrial park. And, um, the other exciting things are coming online. So we just become hell of an office, and that's actually a random of our marketing and visibility activities during 2020. Um, I just tuned to the year when we got to the site collector's feeling, which is about 25 of those national site locations consultants. Um, they said that the site collection will never be the same. Going forward, they're like, we're about 90% of evaluating the communities and real estate virtually. So we are kind of just giving you talk about here in Melbourne, in 2021, we are going to be preparing our office marketing to have a visual presence. Um, because usually I would ask those in the media, well, we go around the community tour, well, direct the airways to do that virtually, so carry the same methods. I'm a hands-on learner, so to think of inviting people to work, we'd be a member of something good on the bill here is kind of stressful. But I definitely think that people work together and have very good opportunities. We also established a monthly, uh, virtual media presence where we have daily impressions and we're targeting our audience. We are able to highlight availability in sites, share stories with companies with their success stories here, um, have success stories for our community. Highlight job listings and the value of the company development. It's all been a great sharing site for COVID-19 information that's become available. Uh, I'm certainly bringing to a lot of groups, not just here locally, but also throughout the state, um, which we've done a couple of money fund developments. Um, I also, um, Callum and every marketing, which I think that you guys are familiar with, Cliff had asked me to do one of his podcasts this year, which I was very committed to do. And it was about communicating your value proposition. Uh, 41, that was a great marketing piece, 40 development. And again, um, during this whole time, we have invested in marketing so that we do push forward on the new real product and ways for mobile properties that we have. So 2020, uh, we featured 14 businesses. Uh, through one letting cuts, we have collectively stated 34 business expansion and retention meetings with local companies. Uh, we sourced a lot of new active business expansion projects as a result of those meetings. These are companies that are here that are saying, hey, we could might, we have the need to add the totality. We might have the need to, um, have a big shift. Uh, we also reported about this new business recruitment activity to resource funds 21 or a classical proposal for companies that don't have a location here currently. We live for in person at virtual sites for businesses seeking a new location. So that one day, if you saw about 20 different cars and then a trail, that was us to get to the tour during a pandemic because we all had to have separate vehicles. And then I participated in CEO mission trip in the Pittsburgh City Market and then the Antigua Market, all these, those were obviously virtual. Um, through our public meetings this year, we successfully launched a new course deal to millions. It seemed like so long ago that happened just back in January, but Nicole Huddy, it was their quickest time in market of any plant they've built in recent history. But I think, um, that's just a testament to the working relationship they've had with city leaders, county leaders, and all of the other local patients. So thank you to everybody in here for supporting that a lot. Uh, we also, Sydney Cadence in my office is able to attend several certified company development training courses virtually. Um, of course, we've started construction in rail, for a rain yard, which is a great accomplishment. We also secured a hometown recovery grant through Evergreen for additional rail planning in Sodalia Rail Industrial Park that we look for to, uh, second and third phase of the program. And, um, because of all the work that we have done here, uh, the city of Missouri is launching a new mega site program, which is usually large traction property to reach mega, you come to a project. And they recently have reached out to me in, um, in terms of our, the various works mega site. So I'm incredibly excited about that. Our priorities for 2021 are really digging in on that various works mega site opportunity moving forward and making sure that everybody's anybody that needs rail service, the, and industrial property, they're looking at maybe a 2, like. Um, community investment created to help tell our story virtually, uh, German footage with a lot of additional building on it. And the community numbers, what community tool, tool. Also working with finer trails, regional energy mission, and they were the recipient of some care dollars and filtering those down to each county and how we use the community work more hand in hand with companies for the retention recovery. Um, also going to, if we're always, especially on the can support smaller businesses. But for a long time, uh, we have worked with small businesses hand in hand with the State Street Community College, small business center. But as we've had more capacity, um, within our own organization, can we be giving more support there? So you know, we might take more handholding and more years to get them off the ground, just to drive here in the community. And for additional community attributes, we do, it's in childcare, housing, and doggy access. Uh, I know it's taken a long time, but I will tell our story. Uh, I want to say thank you to everybody on this list that played a important part in company development throughout our community. I've been through the team sport and that is 100% the truth. Some others beyond, uh, city, Sodalia, obviously, we go there, it's often a couple of down to, I mean, our initial experience is incredibly important. And we've got opportunities for our faith in the community. I also want to say thank you to the floors, the stuff they've definitely undergone in recent history that support, we believe for our community to grow. This is the brand new thing, more that we can tell our story about the communities, the only, the thing that helps the company develop, do our job is getting on the community. The coverage and the plan, I think that is a phenomenal process to go through. So that, um, it shows that we are active and, uh, that we are a, a community that has thought and strategy and integral. Um, and then the community center is an incredible asset, as I'm doing community tours, talking about the reliability feature in our community. And then the recent announcement, we've got your community college workforce, the vision, that your company have to have a place to not only find the talent, but to absolutely have their talent and retrain people here. Have that solution right here in our backyard, that's phenomenal. So thank you for that. And with that, I'd be happy to, let's take a question.
Your question, sir.
In your book, we also have, like I said, that presentation, we have our recent integration setting that we can shed through here, so 2021 will be our next year we do this. I'm also trying to get my hand on the wheel time labor data because it is all over the place right now. It is hard to nail down, even though our, it's not integrated because it's fluctuating and there's so many variables that go into it. I'm trying to get my hands, uh, it seems like we all have certain issues that we have. And then we also have, um, in the bracket, integration, um, paper, both for Sodalia and in the Texas.
Do you have an extra one for counting?
I do, absolutely. Anyway, I have.
Turn to the page. Thank you, Dr. Drucker.
Thank you.
And next we have the monthly funding slot, it's, uh, Drucker, yes. Very cool.
Hi there. Hello.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to go over the, the taxes collection for the previous month. And this is a 6.3% increase in sales tax for the month after we remove the, the park sale tax increase. It's more 20% for the month, however, for the year, 2.7%, which I believe is contract or better than what's budgeted for the year.
Mm-hmm.
U-JAC, actually, we have to get you removed, the park sale tax increase, we're at 5.5% for the month increase. But then overall, for the year, only a half percent increase. And the rest of the month, I think, are pretty self-explanatory. Does anybody have any questions? Or have additional comments?
Counselor. Okay. Thank you, Drucker. No, thank you. Keep, keep going.
Well, next we have the, uh, presentation from the Scott Goffman International Right Time Foundation. Is there any report, President Jones, here?
Good evening. I stand before you for the second year in a row, make you a word, I'm sure. Um, Doug Fries, the new president of Scott Goffman Foundation, I know, sir, was the past president, but they, uh, like my presentation last year, and that's what I do, and I did that presentation this year. So, um, 2020 was a challenging year, and we all know, but I think we have a dynamic with the residents of Scott Goffman. I really answered the call of how do we keep this thing in the public eye and how do we keep our funds and our balances where they belong and keep moving forward with our decisions. So tonight, uh, I will speak real quick on who our board members are. It's our previous president, Dr. Becky M. Hauser, Chad from Menefee, uh, former Sodalia candidate, Nancy Moss, Chris Robinson, Bob Walters, Emily Porter, myself, Athlete Boswell, Kyle Merrick, and Deb. All represent, all representing Sodalia. And Brian Riley, the new artistic director, Peter Gilbert from Brian Hall. That is usually a position that is not in a community because we go with musicians themselves to take an artistic director. Um, our mission with the Scott Goffman Right Time Foundation is to preserve, promote, and understand, and appreciate the right time music. I think what we did really well, and what this board has been really focused on, is securing Sodalia's place in modern American music. How do we tell the world this is where the music they listen to today started? And not only is our festival known worldwide, but large festivals primarily collect because it is a reunion for the musicians themselves. They take reduced fees to come to Sodalia because they want to be where Scott Goffman created this music. Our objectives are to manage business for, and to generally set the guidelines for non-profit organizations. Uh, we assemble strong core volunteer leadership, as I showed you earlier on your. That's more of an educational, academic explanation of what this genre of music is doing, and there's so many layers to it. So we have academics who come and come with the music and really explain certain aspects of the music, which we, we as people, as residents of Sadiya, and friends now would think that. So they really dig down into the academics of the music. The big thing that Sadiya is known for is the interaction of musicians. Musicians play at open venues, they're very receptive to public, public ask questions, they can show them a different hearing techniques, teaching their audience how to do things. So it's really a really interactive process, it's not just a performance. And of course, the ragtime reunion, which I mentioned earlier. I want to go back a year, because I wanted to remind you of the impact on Sadiya. We're the longest standing ragtime festival among all the sort of celebrated in the United States. We attracted 26 states and four foreign countries, I'll show you that on the map in a moment, 1,171 concert tickets were sold. We translate that with the commission of visitors, 465 overnight space, $90 per person per bay, later in, food, ticket sales, et cetera, with a total economic impact, impact to Sadiya of $110,335 for 2019. I like creating this map to show you where everybody came from that attended. These were the visitors in 2018, 26 states, four foreign countries, Brazil, Canada, England, and France. This year, we asked the city for $10,000 in support and graciously offered that to the ragtime festival. By March, we knew that it wasn't going to happen, and we started pulling the plugs on contracts, and we did that in such a timely fashion that we didn't have to pay contract penalties. So the festival really got through, or the foundation really got through this year's festival being canceled with almost a zero sum change to their balance sheet. We didn't lose money, we might have lost a little bit of money, $400 or $500 here and there, because we didn't have the income, but we also didn't have the expenses. So we wanted you to recognize that we understood the offer was there, we checked ourselves and we said, and did not need access in mind this year. The business community contributes $10,000 plus in products, services, and sponsorships to the festival each year. The Missouri Arts Council provides an annual grant of $877. And the tourism marketing grant, promoting to bring overnight visitors in, is $26,050.
So is that the tourist grant or?
That's the reserve grant, yes. The tourism marketing grant is our local tourism marketing grant, that's the Sadiya Commission, or Tourism Commission. And we also have additional sponsors throughout the year for our artists and resident programs. Our thrower really steps up to a play the foundation has for public inception. As you know, we had to cancel the festival this year, canceled prior to contract penalties. What we did this year, though, we needed to figure out a way to stop Joplin Foundation in people's minds, so we created Syncopated Saturday Night, raised over $8,500 in donations. We see the list from the board with foundation money of $500, $250 per performer. We have two performers each month, I believe it's the first Saturday night of the month. But we paid them to agree to just do a live Zoom meeting with their music. Each, and I think this is only two, two months of donations, but then we took the funds to cover the next event, the following month, and paid those musicians. Those musicians had no source of income, like, now, it's starving, so we wanted to cement in the mind of our musicians that Sadiya is here for, that the Ragtime Foundation is here. They're very appreciative of this effort, and they want to be on schedule, so hopefully by the time we go through 10 months, we have 20 musicians that would have been here for the festival still able to end their income in whatever small way we're able to help them. I'm sure they're stringing a bunch of us along. That will continue. These states represent where people watch Syncopated Saturday Night and act fun this year. This is the best map, most accurate I could get without digging into people's personal information, and tried to stop as many as I could, just based on the name of the email account, or if they sent a check with an address on it. But we also have Brazil, we have a doctor in this family in Brazil that were hard to step Joplin supporters, they were here a couple of years ago, Catherine Boswell, close to them. So there is, and I'll be at the festival this year, so our vision for this year. We've been working with the CDC over the past year and a half to create a new venue in Seventh and Ohio, the Truman Initiative Camp, and that's really to highlight local civilians, of how do we get the locals to town, in town, to come out to the festival with modern American music, and tell them how it ties in with ragtime and where it came from. We'll continue Syncopated Saturday Nights, or YouTube presence, you can find this on YouTube, so look up Syncopated Saturday Nights, sign up for that. The more subscribers we get, the better it looks that for the foundation of Sadiya. Continue educating our younger generations, especially our schoolchildren, and increase their awareness of Sadiya's location and importance to American music, and increase their round visitors to Sadiya, to Sadiya's ragtime culture, and to the market, regional markets. And we thank you, and we look forward to your support again this year. Doug would have been here tonight, but there was this celestial happening on the Saturday night, but Doug really wanted to witness, from a logistics standpoint, I believe, so he expressed his support for car acts.
So what is the slide?
This is live for this year. Well, this year, the board does not have their meeting, second Tuesday of January. As far as we're concerned right now, we're still looking at that June date. That board will leave in January and discuss that. But we believe that if we're going to change anything, we've got to change it now, so I'm looking forward to the board meeting, and addressing that issue.
Well, the Maple Leaf Park, I saw where they wanted to use that every time, the site and Scott Joplin Festival, or else we may use that part as well.
Well, the board is suggesting that the city take over that asset again. The city owns the property anyway, so they would certainly be able to use it throughout the year, but they wanted the city to be able to market that as a venue that other organizations can use throughout the year.
We did dedicate time and effort to clean up this area.
They just stagnated, maybe they need to go up to the end or something.
Well, we have city staff going to use the cleanup, we examined the wooden entrance, the view on the road, the race, the state knows, we prevented vandalism, just some property that was in there, the display boards, we cleaned that. So there's plans for cleaning that up further, once we get past tonight, and having the city take over that stuff.
I thought this was the Saturday night, I'll expect to hear names, you don't go back?
That's probably Bob Walters and Chris Robinson. I love what was Syncopated, makes people go away, get their explaining to them, and they go forever. It's really neat. I didn't go to it right when it started, you know, I went to it one day just to, I started the whole thing, I was fine listening to you. You get real personal with that musician, they're explaining things to you, and they're giving them their music, and you're right there, you know, keyboard with them, so.
How long?
They're usually about 30 minutes, 30, 45 minutes.
Yeah, I love the idea of a job.
Well, thank Chris and Bob, and Doug made it happen, so.
John?
Yes.
Steve? So we can participate on the Zoom meeting, and then it's recorded, and then it's posted on YouTube. Is it live? Can we go live and watch it?
Yes.
Okay. So you have to give invitation, I have to leave.
Well, you go to YouTube and watch it live.
Oh, okay.
I was just using.
Okay, okay, so it is live, first Saturday?
Yeah.
Time?
I believe those are at 7:00 PM. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, I should know that, but I don't.
Thanks. I just, I just want to. It's fine. And the musicians are vastly different. The first one was a gentleman in St. Louis, I forget his name, bad board member, I forgot his name. But he was more of your lively, honky tonk type, and then the other one was New York City, Richard Bellamy, who was more of a classical ragtime, you know, so you have these two different styles, and you can, you can actually see and feel the difference. It's not just people backing on him.
And it's generating some income, right?
Yes, it's generating some income, but we're passing that on with the musicians.
Yeah.
Which we would have done.
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you, Steve.
Thank you. I'll stand up here for the next person.
Thank you, Representative. So the next item on our agenda is Maple Leaf Park. So what this resolution does is currently the city owns the property in 105 Wood Quine Avenue, and, but the foundation owns the improvements. So what this resolution does is it takes, so takes the, accepts the improvements from the foundation.
Yes.
If anyone adds to that?
No, it's, we've been working with the parks department, the foundation, and our city management staff to come up with a plan for improving the facility, even maintaining the plan as a movement throughout the year, which the foundation is struggling to get volunteers for that, that is the way.
Any other questions? Or anyone reading the resolution, please?
Resolution 1920, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of improvements made by the Scott Joplin International Ragtime Foundation to the city property known as Maple Leaf Park, 105 Oracle New Street.
Question approved?
I have a pulse. Next, I have our agenda, it's two ordinances there in relation to amended personnel regulations regarding employment relatives, workplace relationships, and documentation. Administrator, shall we take a stand to do?
Sure. Basically, there are really, really kind of two issues. One, really, I'm sorry, I got something. All right. The first one was really in relationships to family relationships, being able to be employed. And there's two parts to that. One is his relationships to council members and the mayor, or elected officials, if you will, and then employment relationships or family relationships for employees within departments. And the, the first one, as far as council, kind of came up when, when we had, when we appointed Mr. Bliss. We looked at that, at those policies, and also checked with the state, and checked with MML to make sure that, that we were okay with appointing Mr. Bliss with his son working, working as, as a city employee. Then after we've done that, and everything checked out all right, but obviously, but after we did that, then Ms. Bogus brought it to our attention that she was told, or her son was told, that he couldn't be employed by the city because she was a council member. And so when we got to reconciling what's the difference, the difference was is, well, you could, when our policies, what our policy state is, is you could be appointed or elected to the council and have a family member being an employee, and, but if you were already on council, then you couldn't hire a family member, and that went to the fourth degree. So honestly, I had a hard time justifying that difference, you know, it's just a timing difference. And so I told, or I asked, did some research, and basically what the Constitution requires, the state statutes require is really what's stated in the policy now. It's a very simple paragraph, that as far as elected officials, you cannot vote to appoint or, or change anybody's employment relationship for an employee. Is basically, I can't quote it off the top of my head, but that's basically all that it is. So our policies were more stringent than what the Constitution allowed, so I recommended that we just take it back to what the Constitution requires, and that is, if you ever have an issue come up that affects one of your family members, then you need to abstain from that. The second part was of that ordinance, or that issue, was where you prohibited family members to be employed in the same department. And honestly, Mr. Rice and I have, have struggled with this issue, and we've tried to come up with different language to accomplish really what we're trying to do, and that's trying to eliminate the effects on the job of family relationships. He's brought up several times, and I, and I agree, is, is, you know, you can also have, you know, people living together in a close personal relationship, and our policies are silent for that currently, but that can have more, even more effect on the workplace environment than somebody in a family relationship that is forbidden by our policies. For example, you could have, you could have two cousins, right now, our policies forbid two cousins to work in the same department, while at the same time, you can have two people living together in a close personal relationship, and one supervising the other with our policies. So what I tried to do is, is look at, okay, rather than trying to make the policy spell out all of these different circumstances and what you can and can't do, my opinion is, is we need to let managers manage and give them tools to do that. And what we're focused on is, is the workplace, how it affects the job, not whether they're in a relationship or not. And I really have no desire to look in people's bedrooms to figure out who's, who's living with who, and whether that's in violation of our policies or not. So what I try to do is, is back the policies up and just make them pretty general, in that, you know, if, if your relationship outside of work is affecting your work, then your manager or your supervisor needs to deal with that, as it relates to the work. My past experience, I can tell you, you know, one of my previous employments, we had a husband and wife that worked for the same company for, for years, it was never a problem, they were both great employees, both, you know, long-term employees. We also had instances where people were, started dating, and then broke up, and that created a whole lot of problems. So again, what I was trying to do with the policies, maybe I missed the mark, or maybe I got the mark, but what I was trying to do, or what I recommend in these policies, is leave them very general, and give the supervisors the opportunity to fix a problem as it relates to work, only as it relates to work. The second ordinance, it deals with bank vacation, and bank vacation has come up only a few times that I'm aware of in the, in the city. And what it really amounts to is, is you have some, over the course of time, you have a couple of issues where we have a cap on our accrued vacation. However, we've had a couple of instances where that cap was met, or where that cap really got in the way of us having employees that were, were needed. The most recent example of that is, is the COVID, and we had some people. to um, uh, fix a problem as it relates to work, only as it relates to work. The second ordinance, uh, it deals with bank vacation. And bank vacation has come up only a few times that I'm aware of in the in the city. And what it really amounts to is is you have some uh, over the course of time, you have a couple of issues where we have a a cap on our accrued vacation. However, we've had a couple of instances where that cap was met or or where that cap really got in the way of us having employees that were were needed. The most recent example of that is is the COVID. And we had some people that were capped out on their vacation. But yet, you know, in the in the uh, emergency situation of trying to prepare for and handle the COVID, you know, um, one example of that is is our deputy fire chief. We really couldn't allow couldn't allow him, right in the midst of all of that, to be off on vacation. So it seemed unfair of us to cause him to lose accrued vacation, yet we were, we really needed him all hands on deck kind of deal. Um, so council, we brought that issue to council. Council authorized to uh, to let the hours accrue above the the maximum. And then um, and then we transferred that to bank vacation after the emergency got over. So it was it was brought to my attention, and I and I and I agree, you know, it seems unfair uh, though, that uh, you know, those employees put that into bank vacation, but yet if we terminate them tomorrow, then they don't get paid out that ba- bank vacation. So it kind of creates an incentive for those employees to leave to secure that that bank vacation. Or contrary, or on the other side of that, it kind of gives the city a financial incentive to fire them, which is not what we want to do. So uh, so I recommend that we just uh, uh, set that bank vacation aside, and we say we will pay that out uh, at separation regardless of the reason for separation. So be happy to entertain any questions on any or all of that, or or take them one at a time.
Any questions, council?
I have um, state interaction. Um, with changing what policy on the same relative to a council member, how do you think we do that? I feel like right now, especially the public that I talk on, government and general is very, very low, and the trust is very, very low, and that's very discriminatory. I think that is, let's just say, if my dad was hired by the city, that it'd be very common thought that, well, he's on the council, that's why they were hired. And I I don't know if that's necessarily a good thing. I don't know if people like that perhaps could get, even if council leaders do not say a word in the way of on the administrative form, that department has to have feel pressure, even if we didn't give it to them, to hire them or not, because of what we do. And I don't know if that's going to be a good thing. That people, you know, I think that when we're like this, there are things that we know are in touch on life and move aside to run for the seat, then you have to make sure that those, and then there's where that that is big when you can't do it, or not, I think is kind of, you understand what it's like, but you have to make. But I I don't know if I am really fully changing my policy.
Mm-hmm. Sure. And and I understand, and I and I, it it is an uh, an issue that, you know, there are certainly, uh, there's no uh, right or wrong answer. There's a area in the middle. One thing that I would offer to you is is that um, you know, when we have employees that are already employed by the city, and then somebody gets elected or appointed to council, um, uh, then uh, uh, would we want to get into a situation where those employees would have to leave?
I think it's different, though. I think that it's definitely, if they are unemployed, then that, you know, you can't all the pictures, you don't know if they're going to be on the council, so how?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's different. I don't think I don't think that's a really, a really serious concern. I think that, you know, you don't have.
Yeah, it does. And and personally, I believe that's a fine line, you know? And so it's it's hard for me to to draw that different distinction. Then I can also go further by saying, you know, okay, where does it end? And you've got to draw a line somewhere. Um, but, you know, a a cousin of a council member, you know, one council member could be very close to their cousin. Another council member may be, you know, not even knows that that cousin, you know what I mean? Um, and so, you know, I could see drawing the line shorter, but then you got to draw the line somewhere, so I, you know, but I.
But then if the um, when they change this policy, you're dead with your own issue.
With council members?
Mm-hmm. And not what?
What if it wasn't council?
Yeah, I I.
There's another issue that the city could find without that change. This is the Vikings. Now, I'm being the old guy, you know? When we go back in history, and I do like history, about what's what's going on, uh, I can't give you the exact date, but really go back in history, they happen a lot.
Yeah, they do.
And then it's just all about, I mean, maybe thirty years ago, twenty makes real bleach, where this wall, where it came to light, you know? And, you know, there's a couple of sites, I want to speak a little bit on this. A couple of segments also that, I think about earlier, mentioned that for women and women, work pool. And if you notice the people who have sitting on the council, they're elected in a toxic reason. We use it as best representation of the people. And that also leads into people can hire more campers, because they're limited on themselves. And the way that, you know, the council itself has its own sort of limits that it should and and should be adhered to and should be released by the council itself. Okay? As we go forward, the council really only has two people that are interested. Those are the legal, those two, and the city manager. Okay? So that part of it is leads you to the next part of who's in charge of this person that's in question, within what they're into the game. And if you, as a council member, you want to be opposition, then you would go to a department director or a supervisor and say, hey, you don't do this or that. Okay, you are in violation of that code. And it's nothing to do with the employee. It has to do with their relationship, and I will hope that everybody out sitting here that is a supervisor and director, at least from my side, knows that they have my support. But if that ever happens, it needs to come before the council, one way or the other, for us to be able to handle that particular situation. The guidelines that we're looking at tonight, and I've done some research on this also, that within state statutes, and guided by people from Missouri Ministry, we have good place to get information from, that we're not violating anything by making these changes.
In city government, city civilian, the city administrator for government is relatively new. It actually started in the seventies, and that part of that time, each council member was a department head. You know, we were, in this case, voting safety, Thomas Owen, he was department head of the fire and police department. My answer, where would I be? And we we were ruled slow on many uh, rules and regulations in our way we banked. But uh, you know, it took a while, but I think now we're we're much more professional. And I think our department heads are expandable. And the case now, we have, we have department heads with us, and I think they they take the those uh, anybody, those applications, and we let them make that sit in their department. I know I don't know, I don't know. I don't think anybody else says either. I would be burnt in certain cases. I have a thing to say, Mike.
I have a little something I need to say, too. First of all, let's do the job first. And uh, for us personally, we talked about this, and John asked me to fill in the seat. So first of all, I want the council all vote the way that it is important, because I can easily finish this, uh, I mean, I can step down tomorrow. I can finish the seat and it's enough election in April twenty one. So vote the way that's true to your heart. Uh, it's going to be easier to find with your council. I mean, it's the undercurrent policy, you wouldn't have to. I understand that, but if you want to change that policy, we believe you should change it. Change. I mean, I want to make sure everybody understands that, but the thing becomes primarily first, we have my son's position. I I won't continue to be a councilman if his, you know, his heart's first is to improve. And I think he's doing a good job in the city, and I, and we, I put this position just because we didn't think it'd be an issue. But uh, no, don't, don't let that be a consideration of how you vote for this ordinance or if you want to change.
Yeah, and.
That's what counts first.
And I probably should add that, uh, Councilwoman Bogus, it this is not an, no longer an issue. Her son has another job, so we can not change the policy.
I understand, which is something I I agree with, to our spirit, I agree with. I want to make sure everybody should have discussed this before.
All right, it was, we, you know, we had a, we did a thorough research on that. And it was, it was a question that was brought up, and it was a concern, and we, we uh, like the municipal league and other organizations, it's a question of legality of it. And we felt confident.
It's just hard to find, it's kind of hard. They were definitely.
You're a fast horse.
You are. And you saw a couple of things. In regards to your statement about the trust that we have to recommend, I think what you're seeing here tonight is like the waters before us, including this transparency. And we do have our council members that have siblings employed within the city. This is going, we've discussed this over, at least my time on the council, at least three times we've gone through this. So the fact that we're going out here and trying to make this change, so we know what we can truly do, and that policy is, I think, is transparent. So and I think you have your point, uh, under those circumstance, should anyone ever have any influence on anyone within the city as a council, meaning in order to employ an individual or family member. Well, there's really that fear factor with this council that we have here right now. I think it's a very fair council. But it doesn't say that on the street that we could have some, of a using.
That's not right here, is. I think we have a wonderful council, I think, where we're all.
Well, I, but I'm assuming that they have only one person.
Right.
And that happens. And here again, I'm going to go back to the council, what do they have? I mean, honestly, there's time, and we kind of refer to that in the back of our minds with some of the things that have gone on. But it's our responsibility, at least here, to adhere to that. Here. I just, I I struggle with it all weekend. Uh, on the one hand, I can see the argument of we're limiting our labor pool, which is, and you're eliminating people that are qualified for the job. Uh, but then on the other hand, and I think this council is solid, uh, the, it it disturbs me the playground down the road that could be abused. So I'm, yeah, I think back and forth in my head all week, so.
Now, I'll I'll echo Councilwoman Foster, Councilwoman Dawson. I think we have a very fair council. Right now, we have very strong leadership directors as well, but there's no way it's always going to happen in the future. And I think what happened was, it could definitely cause more issues down the road that we can ultimately just completely avoid. We don't have to delve into those gray issues during this pipeline, but it's something the state, no, we shouldn't have this conflict of interest. Uh, the state in this race that we're limiting our in our pool of employees, this is a policy that's all the time. This is about, this is a conflict of interest, we don't have to limit that. That just, that just can't happen. Um, so we have, we mean our 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 pool, but this is a bunch of politics that's causing work. I can't say that I I'm necessarily for this. I see where it it could be some problems, but I think ultimately we need to avoid issues in these gray areas down the line that we generally get into. I think it just makes it easier for the partners to, that they don't have to go to their managers and to the employees to to try to figure out what what the issue is and how to resolve it.
I've not looked at any of the uh, applications for employment as far as with the city of civilian is concerned. On that application, is the question on there, do you have any relatives? Is that on there? Because I can tell you that with my son, if you didn't know who he was, you wouldn't know that he's came to me, because we don't have the same last name. So you could have hired him without even knowing that he was my son. And I'm saying that because there could be others that have been hired, and you don't even know that they're kind of somebody. I I totally agree with Jeff. When you take this position as a city council member, you're responsible for a whole lot of things. And you have to be upfront about it. You have to say this is the right thing to do, and do the right thing. I understand the concern, but again, you could absolutely have somebody in these places that you don't even know.
Well, uh, on the first personnel regulations, I think, I'm all for it. And I think you have a long time for that. Uh, I'm a firefighter, and he's sent to the firefighting academy, and I've I've passed the exam good. So right now, he can't become a firefighter, unless it's changed. And if there's qualified people out there, I think we should hire them. I think this will pass.
Any other council members, second chance? All right, read the ordinance, please.
Number twenty twenty dash two nineteen. An order permitting sections four dash ten and four eleven of the city of civilian personnel regulations relating to employment of relatives in workplace relationships.
All right, favor? I propose.
Number twenty twenty dash two eighteen. An order permitting sections four dash ten and four eleven of the city of civilian personnel regulations relating to employment of relatives in workplace relationships.
All right, please.
Dawson?
Move the mic.
Uh. No. Alvin? Astane? Richardson?
Lucas?
No.
No? Jimmy Cross?
Yes.
Austin?
No.
Reddy?
I feel like I need to say.
Lehman?
No.
Olden?
No.
So we have two guests, four uh, notes, and two extensions.
If if I could inquire of council, uh, is it really just the council family relationship that's your your objection to this policy? Or is it the whole policy change?
The council part, definitely. Um, I think that with the work, that the council members, as the leading part. I mean, those.
Yes, both.
Like maybe, not just the council part, the uh, I don't know, the issue can be more.
Okay. We will um, take a stab at at some alternate language, and and we'll 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 take a look at that. So, thank you. All right, read the second one, please.
Number twenty twenty dash two twenty. An order permitting section six point one, subsection B, paragraph one, relating to separation of employment.
Second, read it. Second. All right, please.
Number twenty twenty dash two twenty. An order permitting section six point one, subsection B, paragraph one, relating to separation of employment.
Final question. Second. All right, please.
Bogus?
Thanks.
Richardson?
Yeah.
Ross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Olden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Boggs?
Yes, I did it already.
She's like, I think.
A standing, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, two and seven years of one extension.
Did you call Kristen?
Yes, Kristen, yes.
Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the signature change for municipal court checking account. Uh, we handed off the municipal court to the council. And what this resolution does is it, uh, changes signatures over, I believe it's Susan Sabla, right?
Mm-hmm, and two over deputies.
Yeah, and two over deputies, and then it also creates a, uh, banking portal, a separate banking portal for that.
And removes, uh, city, uh, city.
Any questions from council? Are they ready for resolution, please?
Resolution number nineteen twenty one. A resolution of the city council of the city of Sedalia, sir, offering a change in signatories for municipal court bank accounts and creation of separate banking portals.
One in favor, second. All in favor? I'm opposed. Thank you, Andrew. Jeff Lehman, all in works?
All in works tonight, we have a few items, we're going to begin though with a presentation by our, I'm going to work with Brett Roberts.
Good evening.
Talking about street department tonight.
Can you, you'll speak into that microphone?
I will.
Thank you.
So, we're here to talk streets tonight, and, uh, so infrastructure, roadways specifically. And majority of what we do is maintenance of existing roadways. Uh, the street superintendent wasn't able to come tonight, but he said, make sure they understand, majority of what we do is what we've got in place and stabilized. So we do do mill and overlay, that's about the largest projects we do. And that's replacement of large section basements or concrete without complete replacement because of their existing law, you have to replace the sidewalks then also. Uh, we do some reclamation, and that's what we've been doing since I came, where we'll go into an area and we'll do between two and thirty five blocks. And we use, uh, the existing roadway is ground up, replaced, we inject it with a polymer proc, uh, process that actually makes it very hard, similar to concrete, and then we put asphalt on top. And to date, we have not had any potholes developed in, in those reclaimed roadways. And they, some of those have been in place now for years. Um, we do chip and seal each year, uh, we do pothole repairs throughout the year. And this year, it has already been tough, we've been seeing lots of moisture, freezing thaw, and we're seeing potholes pop up all over town. Uh, we did, you know, an ice removal during the winter, we do an outsourced rebuilding of tread routes because our equipment is not large enough to build those roadways. Uh, we monitor bridges and bridge floors, and we do lots of planning, uh, non- roadway concrete repairs, curbs and gutters, driveway approaches and sidewalks. All are done by our city, uh, concrete crew, and this year, we were fortunate enough with your assistance, we budgeted. Uh, we also do lots of pavement marking and signage, uh, we do signal and sign repairs, and that includes those along, uh, Main Street that tie to the, in the civic line. We do lots of tree trimming and tree removal, and this year, it's just very hard on us. We got hit last winter, this year, and then again this fall, with tree damage. Uh, we also maintain ditches in public private ways, we do not maintain private property ditches where we do not have drainage. Um, lots of culvert pipe replacements, if you put in your galvanized pipe the first time, then we replace it thereafter. They only get replaced somewhere between twenty five and thirty years, so it's not a frequent, uh, frequent replacement process. But it does help us with our MS four, our municipal separate storm sewer, uh, permit under DNR's MPD, that's permit, which is the National Pollute Discharge Elimination System permit, which is actually our wastewater treatment plant. And boy, did that all start to run together when we start talking about it. And we do existing asphalt valleys used for garbage collection. Uh, we do, are not currently asphalting additional alleys, we get that call quite a bit. But, uh, we have ceased collecting garbage alleys, we're going to maintain what we have as long as we can, and as long as we can keep the roadways up, but we are not, uh, asphalting additional alleys. There's always a question that comes up about the alleys along Broadway, if you notice, there is no park in the line of West Highway fifty. So the alleys are asphalted because those people's driveways all bordered those alleys. So in order to get any type of snow removal, or where they can get their cars in and out of those alleys, it's an asphalt. As much as possible, we still have some alleys about six blocks on the east side of the town on Broadway that will be asphalted eventually, but what we do is, as we asphalt roadways or do patch repairs, and there's some product left in the load, we add to those alleys until we get them finished so that people can get in and out during winter weather. Makes Broadway a little more attractive to buy a house in that area. We do have staffing of twenty two people, that, and fax is the, uh, the one that they do. We have basically three permanent crews, the science shop, the concrete crew, and then everybody else is on roadways and tree trimming. So we focus on customer service, we take lots of calls about potholes and, uh, holes in alleyways. Uh, we, we, people on the job with the right attitude, I think we're getting there in the street department. For a while, we had some issues, but we've got some new faces and some, uh, routine crew leaders that have the right attitude about, we're here to do everything we can with all the resources we have, and they're all looking towards new technologies and better ways of doing this. Uh, professional services provided by skilled craftsmen. Have you ever tried to put a sidewalk in? There is a skilled job in the street department. Uh, we do have an aging workforce, and we need to ensure continuity during staff changes. We have hired several, uh, jobs, right, it's always teasing me about the eighteen and nineteen year olds that we are hiring. But they are not interested in college, and they are interested in working outside and learning that equipment. So we are hiring lots of young, young, uh, workforce. Not very skilled, but willing to learn. Equipment, take them a little longer on some jobs. Equipment, the right, proper equipment to do the job right the first time. You're going to see smaller equipment, in some cases, because we don't have the right equipment to get down those alleys and into narrow spaces. Um, the heavier equipment, we don't use as frequent a, it's, uh, feasible when we do need it. But there's some safety, well, even the public and employees in and around their job site, we have had some close calls in the street department. People are not focusing when they're driving, they are focusing on their cell phones and their iPads. And we've had some close calls, and as you all know, we did have a school crossing mark that was hit. Other reason why she was hit, but we all need to be aware of, the roads are where we're driving and not distracted drivers hopefully. Protecting of the environment, that comes back to everything we do on roadways, goes into stormwater systems, so we have to be careful what products we use. And again, we're trying to be very visibly responsible with what funding you're, you're providing us. We've got lots of work that needs to be done in the next little bit. So the goal is to keep streets in good repair with these already surfaces that are already there. We try to rebuild where we can, uh, they're trying to be effective with their snow removal. Uh, we continue on our sidewalk rehabilitation program. We do and are trying to maintain trees in USA at the same time. The wrong trees in the wrong place are what's causing the destruction of the sidewalks, so you can really see some trees that we'll need to move. Uh, some of those trees have been damaged because the sidewalks are there. Um, some of them just were wrong trees, too large in most growth areas. So we're going to start paying more attention to what's planted in public greenways. Uh, we are trying to maintain the culverts and catch spaces on public property, those are some of the areas where you see streets flooding. Uh, our crews are out when we know there's a heavy rain coming, and we're trying to get the leaves and the trash out of those culverts ahead of time. But we need people to get the leaves and the trash out of their yards, so they don't end up in the storm drain. Uh, we're trying to provide timely information on roadwork externally to the public to assist in their travel planning, especially upon chip and seal, so motorcyclists are aware of this, chips are down, so they can avoid this area. I will continue to fill cisterns. I was reading an article that DNR released early in two zero B where they told us that people were going to be homeless. And I talked to the street superintendent and I said, they're saying they're going to be homeless. There's cisterns and there's laws out there that people have forgotten were in their yards. Uh, cities should be checking on that for their programs. And I asked Jeff, I said, Jeff, how many do you think we get? And he said, oh, probably six for now. Here today, we've gotten twenty two cisterns.
That was one of the topics that came up in our community meeting we had this Saturday a week ago. And I don't know how many cisterns that we discussed, but that's.
We're trying to get people to give them a bike, and we will build them if they recall. Uh, children will be out, we've had several, I will call in neighborhoods where houses have come down, and then cisterns existed that people didn't know about, and they're now open, and children go to play ball, and we don't want this child and sister to know about. So everything that we can give them a bike, um, we're going to release that PSA again in the near future and say, if you're out, if you see a home, call us, we, we'll be glad you come check it and see where it goes.
One question I have, does this program extend to laws as well, cisterns?
We will take care of the cisterns, we'll need to talk to DNR about laws. But so far, everything we've got needs a type of cistern that we've been able to build. So the project that we've talked to you about in twenty twenty one, we have done three hundred and twenty five blocks of chip seal this summer, and we are currently work, working on crack seal that works well during this type of weather. We've done twenty two blocks, we expect to, um, approximately two hundred and twenty five more blocks of chip, uh, crack seal this winter. Uh, just for comparison, I always kind of watch the salt, it tells you what element it's going. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, we used over a thousand tons of salt, and in two thousand and twenty, the weather was a little better, and we only used seven hundred and three tons of salt. We're currently, uh, we're in the process of releasing a bid for mill and overlay on Sixteenth Street from Park to Modoc right away, and from Third Street from Park to Ohio. You'll notice, uh, the last time it was mill and overlay, it did not hold well, and it looks kind of like a dalmatian right now. Uh, so we want to make sure we get good compaction on those. The concrete sidewalk replacement and repair that is being done by city staff is, um, I'm not going to reach into it just yet. We've done a lot of sidewalk repairs, uh, they worked on Second Street, they've done some work on Third, uh, they've done Fourth Street, and a small section of Third to Fourth Street on Park. Uh, we've also done Eleventh and Quincy, the stormwater ditch, and we're getting ready to go in on Southwest Boulevard, to go in the area twenty six hundred. They'll see that there's a large section of curb that is failed and has allowed stormwater to move where it shouldn't, and that will be, it's, I mean, we do have a curb repair at Second, then you can hear along with Kate Trail, and, and then we've got some roadway excavation repairs, and we're going to try to get done before they can clear.
And I ask you about District on Sixteen, we're going to do that, uh, from Park to Modoc area. I don't think that's a whole area in there, it's a little where it fills up with water all the time.
Yeah, no, I think that's not include that area.
I don't. Yeah, good. Park is backed by Public James.
Public James.
If you go that way, it can be like the blind half of it.
The stormwater repair that's there is not on the list for, for currently. In order to repair that, uh, you would be, it, it's not Sixteenth Street, let me see, uh, that is causing the problem. And it's in, uh, off the top of my head, it's between two and three million dollars to take care of what is, is wrong in that roadway, it is not.
Now, help, please, what was the, what was the number?
It's between two and three million dollars to repair that. And we, I will tell you that I've gone back and I've looked at that several times, and, uh, they've tried multiple years, and multiple things, it's, it's, at some point, we're going to have to buy a building and do the big job, because what they've done so far, it, it's been a fun, uh, the pipe is just not large enough to take care of it. There, there's actually one area that you can.
Two and one is connected together that go nowhere.
Yeah. Uh, and it's like, yeah, when you get in and you get to looking at this, it's like, why did they do this? And there's one that actually pushes the water back to flow into the other side of the street. Um, it's just not a good. Now, when we talk stormwater, we're getting past the friendly, uh, stormwater project. We've been working on things, you know, between ten thousand and four hundred thousand dollars, and we're now to the point on the list where we're going to start talking a million and five million dollars.
Right, uh, that's it, or Sixteenth, which you thought, yeah. Yeah, that's been a bomb for years and years for us. And they were close about two million dollars.
Somewhere in the neighborhood of two million, I can't remember the exact number, I would say a million and a half, two million dollars.
Oh, I agree with that, uh, are we still with the curb with the property owner paying for it?
We've been talking about that for some time, uh, we'll begin, I'm sure, to do that.
Talk about it.
Well, right now, we're working on the, uh, water improvement repairs. Uh, then you've got your three fifty three that's coming, so you don't want to get across purposes of different programs. So, right now, we'll get the storm, we'll get the sidewalks repaired related to the water improvement, three fifty three is right behind that. And then if there's other areas, you know, anybody that calls wants to talk about helping pay for their sidewalk, I'll be coming to you with individual requests if I need to. Someone who has said that they want that, we could write an individual contract for that, I'm sure, you know, that'd be considered. There's nothing that prevents us from asking you for approval to do this.
Really, we talked about that one time, where if, if the residents pay face of labor, uh, half the cost.
Yeah, I really.
Offered it to something.
But I remember, and it, it may be this, you may predate me on some of these discussions, Bob. Uh, when I'm saying we're talking about the individual paying for the concrete, because we have the existing labor force here. And I think if you look at most jobs, unless it's extremely small, it's about a fifty fifty project that.
My opinion on, on some of that is, is, uh, yeah, it works very well from a financial standpoint, but that's also where we've got sidewalks that go to nowhere and curbs that where you've got the streets going down with curb and gutter, and now all of a sudden, you've got two houses, so it's not curb and gutter, and then it goes back to curb and gutter. I think a better way to handle that is, is to do it through, uh, things like a C, CID, a, a community improvement district, to where we can get the whole neighbors to do the whole block. to where we can get the whole neighbors to do the whole block instead of just doing parts of it. But then, you know, because you have to have some way to handle, okay, this person wants to pay for it and this person doesn't. And so in order to make it effective, do you pay for all of this ones and you collect money from this one? That just doesn't seem to be right. So if we did something like a CID and then you can do a contract with the CID and then it's the whole neighborhood is involved in it and they're all essentially participating in the cost as well as benefiting from it.
Well, there's some sidewalks in Camden I've seen that aren't used at all there. Or in, I mean, this bed there off toward the wall, where we could possibly take those sidewalks out and find rest. I mean, there's not a lot, but I've seen a lot of sidewalks that are never used, you know.
Yeah, and another concept to that regard is, we've talked about, do we only do the sidewalk on one side of the street? But then that raises the issue, which side of the street do you do it on, you know? But there's all kinds of different clinicals on the sidewalks. But the issue is, is we have a lot of sidewalks and we could spend a lot of money on it and we need to. That was one of the things that came out in the three fifty-three. John, I don't know if you remember, I think it was seventy-four percent of the sidewalks in the three fifty-three were in disrepair. So we've got a lot of work to do on sidewalks.
And our best estimate is there's a hundred and fifty-nine miles of sidewalks within the city.
Seventy-four percent.
You've got a lot of work to do with her.
Yeah.
Ohio, Sixteenth to Twenty-Fourth.
That's a classic, that's a classic example of, there's piece now, herbing, and it's not affected.
And those are danger areas when there's snow. It's not a lot of people.
And otherwise, your roadways and.
You can start.
I've heard of herbing almost over. So I guess it's probably a situation that's usually, east side is terrible for the curbs.
So we do have a contractor in town and we were fortunate, we did get a good contract price and they are doing a good job. We had several neighbors in the area where they've done one call and let us know who they are, happy with the work that they're doing. We did have an incident that I do want to bring up where someone drew and basically trashed an entire block of sidewalk. They walked through it, went to split, they threw bricks in it, they threw, I think they threw some branches in it. And there's no way we can repair it. It's too damaged. So at some point, when we get to the end of the job, we're going to have to figure out what we can do for them. But at this point, it's just, we're asking neighbors to help us more than usual when the fresh concrete goes into their area and if they see something, please call. But we have lost a lot of the sidewalks to vandalism. We are doing tree trimming, lots of it. There were lots of damaged trees. We're still identifying some even, so tree trimming has been issued at least this year. So where we're headed next year, I'm sorry I'm taking so long, preventive maintenance. We're again looking at two hundred and fifty blocks of crack seal, around three hundred blocks of chip and seal. Some of the roads in the cemetery we've been talking to Roger about. We're planning to do in-house asphalting on ten blocks in the northwest section of town. And that may be reclamation. We need to find out what the true condition of the roadway is there. And then again, we are going to ask you to help us out with some additional money for sidewalk curb and gutter repair for the additional phases where the water lines are going in. And then we are going to continue to look for innovative technologies to reclamation. We've got twenty-two blocks on the North Citalia project. And then Pennsyl County did receive a grant for the Pug mill and rubberized asphalt. And we're looking into a brick street, hard to model that material. And then we do have some street state repairs that we need to do on Main Street with papers. And then we get to talk about the future, where we need to go and what we need to look at in roadways. Jessica talked about economic development growth in the community. As we build, jobs can bring more people into our community. We need to be looking at roadways for the future. And there are three major areas right now that warrant flow improvement. There's Second Street, US sixty-five and Clinton Road, all merged, if you notice on the map. Whoever originally designed that was very creative, but they didn't put in. Was that mine? You know, it's like, what seems to be nice about that intersection? Not a lot. You know, we looked at some redesign work. The engineer suggested that we can put in some additional turn lines with the existing roadway. That would be about a million dollar repair, but by no means would it fix the problem going forward if it continues. So it's a much larger project than that. That one, and speaking of Modoc, they will be, because it's fifty-five, it's their roadway, it's their right of way. They're willing to cost share, but they cannot tell me how far down the line we will be on that project.
Don't they have a cute dog shaped with grass in the middle of that circle?
They maintain that.
Some, sometimes they maintain that. I have a standing agreement with Modoc that if grass gets to a certain height, it becomes mine and I cut it. So I would not say that they have always maintained it.
But it's not, I mean, it's their property.
It's their property.
To redesign it, purchasing.
There is lots of stormwater materials under that culvert pipe and the like. And that's why they retain ownership of it. Otherwise, he was going to give that back to us. But he said, you know, it's their, it's their maintenance. There's himself under there. The other area is South Manchester Road from the roundabout and planning on a new roadway out to Sacagawea. That will relieve some of the burden off the intersection that we just looked at. It still lets people come through the, maybe through that retail corridor that gets colds and nards and loads of all art and those stores and houses, the shopping centers. At that time, again, the prevented road is taking a lot of beating. It's truly a residential roadway. It's not intended for heavy flow. So this roadway would take some of that flow problem on. I never understood why this was not finished. I was like, maybe they ran out of money. But to finish off the overpass at West Main Street and US Highway sixty-five, the northbound connection. And I will tell you, when I talked to Modoc, he told me equally that the reason this is not finished is because of the height requirements over Union Pacific Railroad. And this project, I think the last time we went through it, recently, I came up with a number between twenty and thirty million dollars. It is not going to be an inexpensive repair, but it manages all the truck traffic coming from all the industrial plants, except perhaps New Core because we've got so much of it focused in that Main Street area. That's a huge project. Some of the other projects, these reach the next three to four years, hopefully, if not soon, are at home. We need to mill an overlay, basically South Grand from US fifty to Twenty-Fourth Street. If you haven't driven that roadway in the recent past, please do. You'll have an opportunity to see both a service failure and several base failures along that roadway. And that's what mill and overlay we repair. And then we've got North State Fair Boulevard from West Main Street to Cherry Tree Land. And I've kind of broken this into what I would consider more bite-sized pieces. We're going to need to fix that roadway to get those businesses taken care of, the surface is failing. We've chip sealed it, we've crack sealed it a couple of times. And now we're getting more infiltration, more failures in that area. So we need to get at least the surface roadways fixed. But then we need to focus on, again, these are a couple of those intersections. And unfortunately, on this one, we've got one on the north and the south where the roadways were just perhaps not well thought out. I think the north, the matter of it was the city limits and it went into a county road and they just did not square it off when the roads came in later. And on the south side, it is just another offset. And if you go there, when those plants are letting out, they'll back up for a mile going in in the morning and coming out at night. And we need to work on that. And also you get a lot of truck traffic coming through there and going over to the Thompson Meadows Industrial Park. So those two. Those two questions. And then perhaps longer term, looking out to the future, is a surface that's a road into the airport. Cause highway thirty, if you've been out, some of that roadway is in pretty good shape. But once you get to Good Bill going into the airport, it's pretty rough again. We need to widen the roadway and then we need to restart it. And then there's a question about engineer. Engineers getting, North of Union Pacific Rail is particularly rough as far as surface. But then we have the issue of the elementary school. If we approve it to route trucks and the rain trucks past the elementary school. So my question, and I've got several people looking at, is is there an alternative that we could reroute some traffic around or through from more of the general access to another roadway? And then the other one that I think is particularly interesting is the one that would route traffic across basically Route sixty-five back to fifty, basically intended as a truck route for industrials that need to get quickly over to the Thompson Meadows Industrial Park area. And I think we'll see some industrial growth in that area once we get our central regional list station operating and some of that other property becomes available for industrial. Any questions?
Thank you. It's one area, I think it's positioned along the area, in comparison to South Grand, that Thompson Boulevard. The surface is just about wrong and a lot of places.
So the question on Thompson Boulevard, in my opinion, there's a couple of things going on. There's clearly an engineering problem and I know they tried to fix it, but the roadway is too flat. So that's why you're seeing all the surface, you know, when we do minor repairs. I think at some point, we need to go in basically to, to Manchester. We reclaimed it and we. The crown is off, basically, and we repaired one on Manchester, but we did a lot of money to restore it to repair Thompson Boulevard to what it needs to be to avoid the problem from continuing to recur. I've got some hope that Modoc maybe coming out with some grants in the future because that clearly connects fifty to the State Highway, then Sixteenth Street. So that section of roadway, my best guess is about one hundred and nine million dollars to recover. And that's the way it needs to be done.
Selectivity, one of my other situations, we see both of them. I'm going to call them the law firms, they're raining coming off of sixty-five. When they own the tax program, the last sheet that I saw, I don't call that.
You mean the two, I mean the one? Yeah. They were. I mean, I'm just telling you.
So in regards to how do we get this out to the forward like they did with the program they're doing on.
I believe the only thing they currently have installed that is the cost. Going across Union Pacific, the height is what's costing. And I think the only reason they have not committed to doing this is. But they did thirteen.
Is comparing the best.
Yeah. The tax money through the Regional Planning Commission is interesting. But they are trying, when we're in those meetings, what they claim is that the lean and test county have a four-lane highway that connects us together. And unfortunately, it's Alcoa County and Johnson County do not, because Highway thirteen is only a two-lane road. So they have been concentrating their funding on trying to get them an equal roadway from Highway seventy back to thirty. And they've made a case for that up until now. So now I think as people start concentrating on economic development and rebuilding businesses after COVID, perhaps some of that focus will shift back to, we are an industrial center. We have business here that needs roadway improvements to be able to produce products tomorrow. I think we need to focus a bit on that.
I have a second. I'm trying to think what I mean. On the project that ends at Twenty-Fourth Street on Grand, we continually lose the water main just south of that. We've had several repairs. There would be, I think before you got to Twenty-Fifth, Twenty-Fifth was living there, but.
I'm talking about this.
That needs to be.
We have about ten projects. I think I'm down to nine. We have nine projects currently being engineered and that's right in the next list.
I still want to turn the point forward and catch up.
Yeah, and if you turn that down the road, there's one that continues to break along there. There's not as much residential in that area, but it, there are barriers about once a month on that line right now.
I've got one more up with, and that's between that third and Liberty Boulevard, between Baseball Stadium and, that's completely gone down. I don't know if that's parts, I don't know if it's on the plan as to that, but that one most need a jeep to get across it.
That's actually not a city street.
Yeah, I didn't think it was, but at some point it needs to.
Amy and I have been talking about that last time. It would be a good project to take the current surface and reclaim it.
Yeah. Maybe even, I mean, we're going to have a street just a little bit further west, right in the community center.
Yeah, that's what I was going to add is, we talked about that, you know, part of what's tearing that up right now is the drive coming in now. But so basically, once you get the community center in and the drive through that parking, then we can look at what do we need to do with that street? And there's parking there at Liberty Stadium that is all gravel right now. And so I think that's part of Amy's master plan is us to, can look at that.
Or to the.
Yeah.
It's fun to start these discussions on the streets because you can see everything else kind of coming together after Jessica's discussion. Anticipation recycling. While we've, now we're doing trash collection four days a week, Tuesday through. What we've, now we're doing trash collection four days a week, Tuesday through Friday, ten hours per day. We collect residential trash and our recycling program has been on hold. We take calls every week, why aren't you doing recycling? And there's really a couple of big reasons. One of those is it's very difficult to find markets for plastics right now. The majority of what we get and our recycling stream is plastics. Lots of people didn't understand that when they said that the export and import markets were closed to trade, that included export of our recyclables to China and the Asian markets and India. So those markets closed, prices dropped, and they are still not where they need to be to make it profitable for us to collect recycling that takes additional resources as far as man hours, equipment. So ground holes, the other thing is you cannot find a white paper that tells you that there is absolutely a guarantee that COVID is not transmittable off recyclables. So any hand sorting creates a problem and you pick that by hand creates a potential for someone to be exposed to an infectious disease. It makes a lot of sense. I came out of the DNR solid waste program to get the material that is not the value underground as quickly as possible and not handled by humans. So that's kind of the approach we'd originally took. We continue to recycle glass, cardboard out of the materials management site. You can drop it off there. We continue to take metals, electronic waste, household hazardous waste, because there's very little human intervention in those processes. As far as sewage stream recycling, we have also found that lots of families are homeless now and they need both their cars to just meet their trash needs. That's what we've been doing. We will start clean sweep back up. The schedule that was in your December water bill, we're hoping to capture those out of the bill and get on the refrigerator. And it's Friday to the date of your bulky item pickup. We are twice monthly providing a yard waste service to fix yard waste that will occur. We do provide on-call services for these, bulky item yard waste, construction demolition, waste. We do participate in neighborhood cleanups. If you'll get it to the curb on the weekend, we'll be giving it Monday through Thursday. Our RIAA's already taxed, we're just ready to charge it. We do inclement weather, it's all hands on deck. Sanitation, there's a lot of the brush removed, all the tree. And it comes down during inclement weather. Abayments, we work with code enforcement. We know that we are hard to collect any materials that may be out. We are spending time on the demolitions, we're doing some of those this week. We transport containers and we are operating the equipment on the site to load all that material. And we do maintain the closed city landfill out on Cherry Tree Lane. We are required under state statute regulation to mow that landfill twice per year, spring and fall. So we are currently staffing at around fourteen people. Materials managed in sight, we are currently operating seven days a week, Sunday to Saturday. And we're operating the Tows County drop-off recycling program. We're also having lots of city participation in that right now since we don't have sewage stream. It's people that source separate their material. We are taking refrigerators and stoves through the bulky item drop-off and we're taking the refrigerators out to make those disposal ready. And we are managing the yard waste sites, household hazardous waste to get electronic waste. Through last month, we have collected five thousand five hundred and eleven tons of trash and one thousand eight tons of recyclables. Last year, we collected roughly ninety-six hundred tons of material. And we are testing for grass, we expect to collect more than that this year. We really need to be figuring out where some of this material is coming from. It doesn't really make sense that it's garbage being generated in community. We think there's some commercial disposal going on. Or collectors, we're not sure which.
Mr. on the last slide. There's a yard waste service fee service. But there's an amount of money that an individual is to pay to get that done. This is what I'm asking is in my block, I have mattresses on the left side and I have counters on the right side. And I'm just wondering, have they called to get this picked up or is, are they not calling the counters, going to cost them to have it picked up?
It can be any number of reasons. We are to the point, the council approved, if you put it out at the curb and we come pick it up, we are going to charge you for it. Okay? So whether, whether you call us or not, we will, we will get there.
Oh, well, this stuff has been there for over a month and so.
So bear in mind, sometimes it takes us a while to get it all identified.
Okay.
You know, a lot of the time code enforcement will let us know where those piles are. Bear in mind that we are picking garbage up out front. Our guys will try and get those all written down if we're picking up garbage and nowing, then we don't always see where it's.
No, no, they're, they're out front on the street.
But we just need to get it identified. If you want to, team, if you can email me the address and I'll make sure it gets to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on that before I go on? Yeah, if you'll call us, we miss things, guys. We see a lot of garbage, we see a lot of trash and we can miss things. I will tell you, I follow that, I'm telling these black naphtha high sources, they either generate themselves, well, that's what they account for thirty-six times in your eyes. But we are looking. You know, I left this out there and Kelly said, where is that? And it's really, we're trying to figure this one out. It's not an easy one. When I first came here, everybody wanted recycling and I looked at it and it was like, oh man, this is, this is eating us alive. And we've tried a lot to keep recycling alive. COVID is almost a dead end for recycling at this point. Especially because we don't have a market to send the materials to, so what do we do if they're collected? So the other thing is that WCA continues to increase our funding sheet annually under a contract. Getting up this year from thirty-four twenty-one per ton to thirty-four eighty-nine per ton. So even if I continue to cut every other cost, cost for disposal, if the landfill continues to go up, and that's why it becomes more and more important to figure out where all the material is coming from. And manufacturer responsibility. How do you convince the consumer instead of buying individual packages to buy bulk packages? It's all about how much of this material we reduce. On the east coast, you can pay a hundred dollars a ton to dispose it right now. Well, how long will the landfill continue to raise costs? Now, operations continue to exceed our revenues collected and reduce operating cost. This is what I sat down with our sanitation managers and group chief and this kind of like, we can reduce manpower at materials management side work. Fortunately, we leave that side open. Then maybe we perhaps we drop it to five days a week. Our slowest day is Monday and Tuesday, so perhaps we go to Wednesday through Sunday. The next person will leave sanitation, then we simply go rebuild acquisition instead of two people needed for materials management to down to one. So that will be around fifty thousand by the time you get all the benefits merged and all that. After that, we discontinued county recycling program. We hey, we can still, we need the brush, we need the limbs because we can't make our compost without that material. And that's why you would want to leave that side open. The disposal of wastewater sludge that is currently going into composting is expected to be around five hundred thousand dollars a year for disposal. But we need that material in the compost that can then be sold to local residents, farmers, des, prevent us from tapping the paper that landfill disposal. Where we need the carbon product to put into compost, that's why we need fresh. Do we need all fresh, do we need commercial fresh, do we need fresh for non-city residents, no fee? And that's why we've been hearing from you about more to begin in strategic planning. We're being a little taken advantage of. The glass collection doesn't cost us anything, household hazardous waste collection doesn't cost anything, heat waste doesn't cost anything. We've got the containers out there, the solid waste district comes and picks it up. The only thing that we transport, I'm sorry, if we get glass, we take to Kansas City. They pay us for the glass and they pay us for the transport cost, that real glass. There are some things that we would need to do. We did receive recycling containers from the district, would need to sell some of those containers because we have not met the seven-year requirement on those. And then we'd have to repay those grant funds back to the district. Same goes true on the recycling carts purchased from district grant funds if we need recycling. But again, that's matter, you sell them and you give them their share back, whatever that share may be from the sales price. And I'm trying to see, is your market still? Absolutely. The big waste companies try and fill their coffers in the years. Trying to see if I missed something. Kind of apologize. Oh, and even having done all of this, kind of consolidating things and reducing things because of that increase in tonnage, we believe we may still need fifty cents for an increase in the sanitation fees.
I'd like to add at this point, this will be an item, a specific agenda item for the council strategic plan. I think it's an important item that we need to, we need to take a look at. This is one way to bring it to a break even. We need to bring it to a break even. I mean, we've been struggling with this for several years. Stopping recycling is a big decision, so we want, we want to fully vet that out and discuss that with council. There is another way to do it, and that is to increase the fees enough to offset the cost of recycling. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me at this point until there's a market for the materials. Because you're just causing the resident to pay more with no real benefit to the environment or to the city or to them. So anyway, the thought was is to bring this up during this strategic planning session and then, and then talk more about it on January nineteenth.
But we got a, still making a treat on Cincinnati, how? Yeah. You know, that's, yeah, I have another question. How far west do people come in grain materials? Do you have any idea? I mean, I go to Warrensburg to work and there are trucks certainly coming out of Johnson County and I think coming out of Jackson County.
The Kansas City landfills.
What?
The Kansas City landfill is basically closed. You've got a landfill in Johnson County, Kansas. You've got one in Nodden, Austria.
I think a lot of people would be amazed how much material comes in that landfill. It's, it's very, very significant. Now, do you negotiate the contract, do you?
We've got a long-term contract with WCA.
Reason for the question is since we're the whole city for all. Yeah, well, that's what I mean, that's what I'm, and the fact that who does the cleanup of all the trash and all the noise that comes in? You know, it's MODA, it's like big, big.
I get an email now from Alliance Club when they go out and clean. And they're working with WCA and MODA to try and keep that area clean. I was told at one point that a gentleman out there had been counting trucks and they received three hundred transports a day. And I'm going over.
One thing, Brendan, I know you can't, I want to get this one right. But I know you probably can't hear anything about it, but when they leave empty, they are not covered. And they are losing plastic bags from Sedalia, Missouri to Nodden, Austria. And could we at least ask them, since we're paying them, have those people cover those as they leave? Because I counted one the other day. From, and I got right behind them, Sedalia, they lost twenty-seven bags before they, twenty-seven large, lot pieces of plastic before they got them to Nodden, Austria. No, but.
My simple answer to that is that the landfill is WCA, Central Missouri, and they are permitted by the Department of Natural Resources. And one of their permanent requirements is for there not to be a probable tracking waste to and from their facility.
You can say, Councilman Lewis, there's a big problem. So may I say that before next week? How about this, the whole town?
I think that's the biggest fundraiser Alliance Club has now. Collecting that, founding has orchestrated that and that, and done a series of things to do that.
WCA needs to better manage the waste material going in and out of their landfill.
That would be a great step.
And I talked to them last week about it. I do not think it's having the effect, whether it is.
Well, okay, one of the, can we at least enforce our literacy? I mean, there used to, there used to try inside our city limits. I.
So I also, I often, you could tell you that it's really interesting out there. Because one side of the street is inside the city limits and there's a section of the street that's outside. So if you, if you would pick it or notice them of the violation, you have to be very careful where you stop.
Does it, actually, does it not represent crash lands or what?
Well, no, it's where your vehicle is when it leaves.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, I think you're right, Steve, you need to make, give them, no, so people today are determined.
Well, there's a state office on there too. We should at least ask the state office.
Yes, we should do that. Oh, mowing and alley maintenance, what do they do? The most noticeable thing that they do is mowing all public places. They go and they cut weeds, the landfill is the end sheltering our wastewater utilization basin. The wastewater plant, the water treatment plant at Supreme, Fort Lake, all city right of ways, any state, they line up side issues along US seven sixty-five, fifty or sixty-five. We remove brush and clean city ditches and then keep the alleys trimmed out in special routine. On private properties, we conduct abeyment mowing, waste cleanups and assisted demolitions. And that's through spring, summer and fall, in the late fall and winter. What we're doing right now, we have finished all the alleys from Third Street to Broadway, east of Engineer. And we're currently working on south of Engineer, or south of Broadway to the city limits. And that's filling all the top holes, fixing all the dry stretches. You'll see a big difference when we get through those. In late fall and winter, let's see. Returning trees and bushes. They also do snow removal downtown on sidewalks that are not maintained by the shop owners. Private property, they're conducting abayments again through the layer, any cleanups. And we seem to be getting more of those this year than we did last year. And all year, anytime I'm short-staffed in sanitation, we move multiple over to help out in sanitation. in sanitation. So, we currently have an operator do, one operator, one and two labors. We did have a part-time downtown laborer, but he did go back to school full-time, so he isn't longer with us. So, so far this year, we did mow the two hundred and fifty-one lots. The code enforcement had it in there, uh, list, and we've done twenty-one hundred and one public work locations. We know a lot. We need to find a better way to do it. We're getting rid of some of those properties which we've been talking about for a while, so hopefully we'll get there soon. Any questions about mowers? How many do you have? Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan, thank you.
Okay, the next guy, um, is she online or not here?
Hang on just a second. Let me get her back to, um, Amy needed to reschedule. She had a, um, um, one of her, um, children has a health problem that she needed to take care of, so she needed to reschedule again.
Well, then the next guy would have to do with the Everton intended plan in regards to the water department. What did the city of, does the high-end period of energy usage, the water department, we switch over to the generators that we have and that agreement, and we get, I'm gonna call it a rebate if that's the right, that situation, uh, because we didn't do that. So, this is kind of a renewal of this, I think, agreement that we have with Everton.
Any questions, Council? All in, read your orders.
Bill number twenty twenty dash two twenty one. An ordinance that's been in accepting an agreement, a then the line between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Everton Metro Incorporated to allow the Sedalia Water Department to use generators during peak electrical usage as part of the business demand response agreement incentive plan.
I agree. Second. All in favor, uh, the folks?
Bill number twenty twenty dash two twenty one. An ordinance that's been in accepting an agreement, a then the line between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Everton Metro Incorporated to allow the Sedalia Water Department to use generators during peak electrical usage as part of the business demand response agreement incentive plan.
Final question. Wolfall, please.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Lemon.
Yes.
Holden.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pocket.
Yes.
All in favor.
Okay, the next guy has to do with a sublease of a piece of property against airport. It's shown by a Steven Garrett, like, missing ahead of the lease right now, backing out of it and wants to re-lease to another individual. But that requires you to, for a five or six dollars, which includes that lease. And that's what we're thinking about.
Any council discussion? All in, read your orders, please.
Bill number twenty twenty dash two twenty two. An ordinance that's been in accepting an airport sublease agreement, bind between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Stephen R. Garrett and David Lindsay.
Second. All in favor?
I oppose.
Bill number twenty twenty dash two twenty two. An ordinance that's been in accepting an airport sublease agreement, bind between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Stephen R. Garrett and David Lindsay.
Final question. Second. Wolfall, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Lemon.
Yes.
Holden.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pocket.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
All in favor.
Okay, my last guy would have to do solar power agreements. If you recall, we had some previous CDs and information and presentations given to us by MC Power in regards to utilizing solar power at some of our facilities. Uh, you want to forward, I'm gonna pass a little bit of this back over to Mr. Shaw there, kind of expecting, I have a couple of questions.
So, then we pass around, while you're getting ready, just the last version that we had before.
Okay.
On that, um, and I, and Scott Beal is here from MC Power. Um, we had a conversation between Scott and I in the afternoon that you and I haven't been able to talk about. We think we've resolved the insurance issue and also, um, um, and I think we've got a final price as well. Um, there's some other terms, um, and, um, I guess, uh, minor points there to say that we still need to work through.
Not monetary.
But not monetary issues here. But we need to, um, I think if I've heard the percentage on it, I would say, what, ninety-five percent?
What was it?
Maybe even more than that, just to get it finished up. But if you may recall that there is a deadline because of the credit that you can get from, um, Everton that's that one of these.
Okay, I'm trying to get my, uh, computer to cooperate with me. See that now, basically. Um, if you remember, thank you, Ann, and, and if you remember basically going through this from their, their proposal, I had pulled out, uh, the, uh, an analysis, analysis based off of their proposals and went through the, uh, the different projects and laid this out, just in summary form of, of what they were accomplishing and, uh, and proposing, I guess. And then I did a return on investment or a payback, um, time periods and, uh, pulled all that together and essentially we're at nine point eight eight percent, uh, return on investment. Most of this money, uh, most of the, uh, projects is really in the water department. And so I pulled out there on the water department, uh, the available cash reserves, uh, where this, where this funding's gonna come from. And, um, and so I showed you there that the, you know, two point one million and, uh, and basically that's, that's in CDs right now. So, uh, basically the CDs are on in one percent or so right now. So, uh, essentially what we're doing is, is instead of investing in CDs, we're gonna invest in solar to realize, uh, in the case of the water department, a nine point five five percent return on investment. The contract language that you can see there is, uh, is pulling that together into the contract. Um, and, uh, you know, a lot of work's been done into the, into the contract language, but I think in concept, we're, we're pretty all, all much in agreement that this is where, where we're gonna be. The only thing that affected price, did we get that resolved on the, the?
Well, one of the things was, um, to look at, uh, we had a question on insurance encumbering and providing insurance funding items during construction, uh, but prior to the city, uh, you know, or after the war has been done, and we resolved that. So, it's, it's gonna be on MC Power.
Okay.
It's gonna be provided that.
Included in this price, did we need to?
Yes, sure.
Okay, okay. So, I think we're, we're all pretty much a go. The, the concept is, uh, as proposed and that language basically says that, right? I think so.
And, um, yeah, the chance to look at the page three, very, very top B, then the T, uh, these are specific. There's, there's words left, I think should be looked out, and then, I think we'll see some of the last part. But, uh, I'm not sure, I can't look at it. I think, please, please, if that is, if you're at all.
Sure. Well, I, I appreciate that.
I appreciate it.
Basically, you know, I probably pulled that from another contract, so.
Yeah, there's, you see what I'm saying there? Are you here?
I'll, I'll go for it.
Lord, yes, should we, I think it's there and then, it's, it's, okay, it's.
And, and what the ordinance basically says is, is you're authorizing us to enter into the agreement in substantially the same form and content. So, we can make the minor edits and, and fix the wording and the, and the language, but, uh, the concept is still, still there. That's what we're, so, yeah. Apologize if we couldn't get this to you quicker and just, there's a lot in here that, uh, that needs to be listened to. And we wanted to get it done before we lose the opportunity for those rebates. So, otherwise, we would've slowed it down and brought it at a later meeting.
Any other, the council discussion?
Can I ask you one thing? Just, just sticking here. Any reserves available under, like, line ten, tell the water department, it's two million, one hundred thousand?
Yeah, that's.
Thirty-eight hundred, is it, is it separated by client or am I misunderstanding something here?
Separated by.
Well, you down, okay, one one hundred or two million up there in the water department and then there's thirty million, eight something under the southeast water department.
Well, no, the, the three million, eight hundred is the solar department.
Okay.
So, there's approximately two point one free.
So, they are separated.
Yeah, free pastries for the water department, which is then is a separate fund.
That answers that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in? Read your orders, please.
Bill number twenty, excuse me, I don't know how to do this. Bill number twenty twenty dash two twenty three. An ordinance that's been in accepting an agreement, bind between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and MC Power Companies Incorporated for solar power services at various city locations.
Final question. Second. All in favor?
I oppose.
Bill number twenty twenty dash two twenty three. An ordinance that's been in accepting an agreement, bind between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and MC Power Companies Incorporated for solar power services at various city locations.
Final question. Second. Wolfall, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Lemon.
Yes.
Holden.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pocket.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
And Cross.
Yes.
All in favor.
Read the next ordinance, please. All in?
Bill number twenty twenty dash two twenty four. An ordinance that's been in accepting an agreement, bind between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and KCPL Greater Missouri Operations Company for a facilities interconnection agreement and a net metering interconnection application agreement elected for solar power services at various city locations.
Final question.
Second.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Bill number twenty twenty dash two twenty four. An ordinance that's been in accepting an agreement, bind between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and KCPL Greater Missouri Operations Company for a facilities interconnection agreement and a net metering interconnection application agreement elected for solar, solar power services at various city locations.
Final question.
Second.
Wolfall, please.
Lynn.
Yes.
Lemon.
Yes.
Holden.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pocket.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
All in favor.
Sheriff Mahander Dawson, Community Development.
The, uh, the anti-mission man, top view of the contract, once you guys got the file on the way, or you'll.
While we consider ground every day.
I'm sorry. Uh, we got one, one item, two ordinances on the, uh, community development agenda in reference to the enforcement supervisor position we created. Uh, it's been determined by the first department that that's an exempt, that qualifies as an exempt position. So, uh, these two ordinances just amend the personnel rate, right, in regard to that.
The council discussion. All in, read your orders, please.
Bill number twenty twenty dash two twenty five. An ordinance pending ordinance number ninety-nine forty relating to a vending and job description for co-enforcement supervisor for the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second. All in favor?
I oppose.
Bill number twenty twenty dash two twenty five. An ordinance pending ordinance number ninety-nine forty relating to a vending and system classification and job description for co-enforcement supervisor for the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final question. Second. Wolfall, please.
Lemon.
Yes.
Holden.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pocket.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
And Lynn.
Yes.
All in, read the next ordinance, please.
Bill number two twenty dash two twenty six. An ordinance pending Appendix A of the city of Sedalia's Personnel Regulations Manual pertaining to the FLSA exempt employee classification rule by adding the position of co-enforcement supervisor to bed list.
All in favor? I oppose.
Bill number two twenty twenty dash two twenty six. An ordinance pending Appendix A of the city of Sedalia's Personnel Regulations Manual pertaining to the FLSA exempt employee classification rule by adding the position of co-enforcement supervisor to bed list.
Final question. Second. Wolfall, please.
Holden.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pocket.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Lemon.
Yes.
All in favor.
Appointment, please, all in.
Okay, I have three that we'd like to do in all at once.
Please.
To members of the city council from Mayor John Cady, uh, new appointments to the Central Business and Cultural District Board of Directors, Chris Pastovich, seven twelve West Broadway, completing Travis Ross's term expiring June one, twenty twenty two. Today Public Library, Jackie Marshall, seven eleven West Sixth, completing Rick Tell's term expiring June twenty twenty three. And then, um, for Mayor Cady, I would like to make the following recommendation for reappointment to the Sedalia Area Tourism Commission, John Cady, city of Sedalia, two year term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty two. And to members of the city council from Mayor John Cady, would like to make the following recommendation for reappointment to the Economic Development Board, Jill Lemon, city of Sedalia, one year term expiring December twenty twenty one.
I hope you were reading the box. Okay. All in favor?
I oppose.
Record licenses, all in, please.
There we have two rules this evening. One is telling words, um, black duty business that state their spirits at fourteen nineteen stop limit for packaged liquor, taste testing, some sales lines. And Scott Decks, city minister of State Times on the three oh eight four, eighteen West Broadway for packaged liquor.
Welcome, good boy.
Second.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Anybody from the city council, the city minister, Mr. Columbus, tonight? Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Never provided the toilet paper, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody from the audience like to make a comment tonight? So how does this go with the paint, with the toilet paper?
You attach the toilet paper to it.
Okay.
Your honor, if you're going to make the motion, we're going to call the question. There it is. Thank you.
All right, favor.
All right, all right. Welcome. Lehman?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pocket?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Lee?
Councilman Richardson, are you where you can get an email?
Yes.
Okay, I'll send you a link to the post door.
Perfect, see you there.
All right, thank you, sir. Like one of these for Lucas. She's going to email him around.
Okay.